Five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome to the Select Board meeting for July 18th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steven, do you have any announcements for tonight?
I do. It's been reported in the papers, there will be a special town meeting next Tuesday, July 26th, 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. It is a one article warrant that was approved at our last meeting two weeks ago and is for, to acquire in a recordable form, the temporary easements we need for the Converse Street project. Hopefully, people have gotten the message. I've been calling the meeting the 50 for five for five meeting. We need 50 people to show up for about five minutes to get $5 million in federal aid highway funding. So hopefully, some of you who really have nothing better to do on a summer weekday night can come join us. It'll be very quick, but the impact in terms of the importance of Converse Street reconstruction, the quality of the work that we're getting, the really major improvements we're making to that important corridor are inversely proportional to the length of time we expect to spend conducting the meeting. So even though it's only a five minute meeting, the impact of the project will be felt for years to come. So it's, it is an important thing that people do need to come up, to show up and make sure we get done right. The easements and the funding were already approved at the annual town meeting, but the documentation was awarded properly. So like I said, we need at least 50 people to come to the meeting and help us keep this project moving. I also wanted to, I did have another announcement. We just talked about it like a second ago.
Re-register.
Oh, right, right, right.
For emergency.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
Alerts.
We, today's weather, even though we missed it, today's weather was certainly a good reminder of the importance of registering for our alert system. We switched software vendors from Blackboard Connect Pacific Plus, so we have been encouraging people to go online through LongMeadow.org and re-register their contact information with a special focus on email and text because we want to be able to send out non-emergency messages to keep people informed of goings-on in the community that we don't want to bother people with a phone call for. I will say that we are going to be sending out an all-call, a town-wide phone call later this week announcing and reminding people about the special town meeting. But if you haven't gone on to our system to register, please do so. And the other thing is you can customize what messages you want to receive and what messages you do not. So you do have some, if you don't want to hear from us unless it's an emergency, you can, you can choose that. I think that's it, right?
And I just wanted to emphasize the importance of the town meeting. As you said, it's, it's a major project here in town, one of the first federal projects we've had in many, many years in recent memory for a lot of people, and it would be a complete streets project. So not only come, but send out an email blast to your friends and family encouraging them the importance of attending this town meeting because it is $5 million, and if we don't get this round, we're, we're out of it for many, many years before we can take care of the issue. Any other announcements for Select Board members?
No.
No? Okay. How about residents' comments? How about Select Board comments?
I just have a quick comment, and I don't know where this belongs, but as I read through the information for tonight's meeting, I was struck by the number of items here that are potential impact to what I'm going to call the character of the town, and I don't know how we characterize the character of the town, but more importantly, I'm not sure how we identify, how we balance the progress versus, you know, maintaining what a lot of people like in the town, and most importantly, who gets to get a say in, in some of the decisions. And as I go through some of the comments tonight, I think I'll, I may refer to it, maybe you'll get a better idea of that, but at some point, it's a concern to me, and I think it's something we ought to consider as we move forward because progress is good, but sometimes maintaining the character is better.
Any other Select Board comments? Town manager reports.
Yes. Sorry. We have the report in the packet. Just highlight a few items. We talked here, and the fire chief has presented here information about ambulance, about using a second ambulance to generate revenue. As I note here, we did have some success with that in FY16. We exceeded our revenue expectations, and another fire department employee, a non-firefighter, one of our administrative employees, found a Medicare reimbursement program that we had not previously availed ourselves of. So that's, that amounts to a $15,000, it's not really a grant, it's a reimbursement for, you know, for seeking reimbursement from Medicare, but it's basically found money for us. So I want to congratulate the fire department for doing that. They also negotiated a lower, a lower percentage payout for the billing service contract, so our, our cost to do our bills is going to go down. I do want to note however that, you know, the fire department runs pretty lean, and we, we're always trying to balance not increasing overtime to keep things going. So if we don't feel like we have adequate staffing, we just don't run the second ambulance, and that revenue opportunity is, is not there. So that's the staffing level. If this is something that based on this kind of test case is something we want to maybe continue in the future, we're going to have to do it, or we're going to have to do something with the staffing to accomplish that. The registrars did announce that they are, there will be early voting that will take place at the adult center instead of the community house, and I think the, so keep, keep track of notifications from the clerk's office of when that will take place. This is for the fall election, I believe. We did, you saw, you saw some information in your packet about receivership. This is something that is one of the tools at our, at our disposal under state law to deal with problem properties. Basically, you go to, you go, have to go through land court, but the state, the court, excuse me, will, will appoint a receiver, which is usually somebody who's a contractor or a developer or something. They will do the, they will do the minimum to repair the house to bring it back to code, and then they will sell it, and they get, the town gets paid back any liens or taxes first, and then the person who's the receiver gets to make a little money on it if it sells after that. We do have a handful of properties that if you read the building commissioner's monthly report, you see the same five or six addresses every single month that we're dealing with. A lot of the houses are vacant, and so this is something that we're going to pursue a little more aggressively. We do have the attention of the Assistant Attorney General. She's been out here, well, she's based in Springfield, but she was in Long Meadow touring those hall, those properties, and we are working on a prioritization of them and intend to pursue some of these now. Is there anyone who's been through land court processes? No, it takes forever, but we are going to, you can't get there if you don't start. So we're going to start pursuing receivership in some of these cases.
Now, in other towns, do they just use an auctioneer to receive them and do that? You know.
For tax title foreclosure, we auction the properties. This is a little different. This is, even if the taxes are current, you can still get a receiver appointed. It's basically, it's a blight elimination technique. So if someone abandons their property or doesn't, they may even pay the taxes and the mortgage, so there may be no debt on the house or no arrears, but they may just not cut their grass, they may have the paint falling apart, that, you know, windows broken, things like that. In fact, we have one of our, a house that we've been in court on, the owner paid the bills, but didn't live there and didn't do anything to secure the house and care for it. That's what this is for. But we do, when we do tax title, South Avenue, which I think we talked about last year, was a tax title foreclosure, and we did auction that one off. The state, the court system handles the disposition of the property, not, not the town.
And so will you have an application process for people who want to become receivers for the town? How does that work?
Attorney General's Office has a kind of, except, has a certified list.
Oh, they have certified lists?
Pre-qualified list of receivers. They have a list of people.
Oh, they do? Okay.
Which is just as well. We don't let them, they, they deal with these all over the place, let them recommend people.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, we've talked about Converse Street reconstruction. Let's have a quick reminder about there. I did go to Bourne last week to see their DPW. I have, I mean, dozens of pictures of people want to see. I only put in three here, but, you know, pictures of the maintenance bay, the wash bay, you know, break rooms, things like that. So if anybody's interested in, you know, greater detail on the photos, I can show you. But it was really, Weston Sampson designed this when it opened in November. I did talk to the folks out there in Bourne, got some really great feedback. There were things that they laid up on that they probably shouldn't have, they probably should have gone a little extra in certain areas, but I thought it was an extremely efficient facility. Really, no frills, but the important parts of it, I think, were done well. The maintenance bay and the wash bay were two areas I thought were very well done. You know, they, they, they love it. Their operation's a little different in that two key things is their engineering department is not a part of their DPW. It's a separate agency that's in town hall, so they don't have the engineering division there. So the administrative, the administrative work isn't as heavily focused in this facility. It's much more of an operational facility than administrative. Our facility that we're planning would have much more administration going on because we do have the engineering department. And the other thing is they, Bourne operates a landfill, and so they have heavy earth-moving equipment, and so they did a lot of, and this is built kind of next to the landfill and kind of inside. So there's a significant amount of excavation and land preparing the site, and they did all that in-house and saved themselves a bunch of money. But if you picked up this building and dropped it on one of our sites, we could operate out of it pretty easily. So I think it's, it's a good model, and they're all expensive, but when you look at, you know, what they got for the money, it would really work well for us, and I thought they did, like I said, a very efficient job.
But just, you know, when I think of what we have now, and I look at these photographs, you know, it's like it would be a pretty dramatic difference. I mean, this looks like a lot more than what we would ever need. I don't know, Richard, what are you, I was wondering, interested in your immediate feedback because like this room with all the trucks in it looks pretty intense.
Well, they put their fleet inside. See, that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
And their circulation room, we're, you know, our complex was built for Model A trucks. You know, and that's the problem. Everything is miniaturized for the fleet that was there at that time. That's why these do get so large, Tom, is that the swing room, you know, when you get a, a big truck with a full plow on it and you're trying to turn it, it takes a lot of room. And they've got large equipment. Our, well, how many square foot was it, Steven?
I don't remember. I don't remember off the top of my head, to be honest with you. I thought I had some numbers in there.
We had that PDF.
Because ours, our facility right now has been pri, has been square footed, it's been...
Yeah. I had that PDF from Weston Sampson. I'd asked them for kind of a summary sheet of it, yeah. So it's tw, 30, it's 39,000, and one of the things is that, that the, the large vehicle storage area is too small, and they're already having to double park vehicles, and it just opened. And that's one of those areas that I said, you know, when I suggested that they probably didn't go as far as they should have on certain things, that's one of the areas that they, that they value engineered, so to speak, to ma, and made it smaller to save money, and it hasn't even been open a year, and it's already not really working 100% for the operations today because they do have to stack vehicles and, you know, things are packed in there. And we want to make sure, you know, for the sake of a couple thou, a couple thousand square feet, we want to do that space right because that's where, that's where our operational efficiencies are really going to come from. And it costs $267 a square foot on their low bid, but the total project cost, which includes soft cost, was about 320, and that's what they've been, that's what Weston Sampson has been really telling us. They do have some bids coming in on some projects here in the next month or two, and so they're going to have updated unit price information that will help inform our cost estimate.
Did that, did that involve land procurement down there?
No.
Did a lot of site work though, I guess?
Lot of, but that's where they probably saved, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on site work.
That's right, because you said they did a lot of site work.
They did. The town and Bourne employees did it themselves.
Yeah.
And they left, they left some things undone. They didn't, they didn't put it, they put in the footings for a canopy over the filling station, over the fueling system. They did not put the canopy in. I mean, you know, I think this, the problem is if you don't get back to it, you know, put the money in later, then you're going to have a fueling system that is going to be out in the elements all the time. So it, like I said, it was a great facility though, by and large. What they did with their, we've talked in the design about a, kind of a cantilevered space where it's covered but still outdoors. They built really a large space like that, and now they're in the process of filling it in to make it indoor space as well, which they had to flexibly do that. So there, there are definitely some discreet line items or design items that I felt were attributes that we should emulate.
And answering more of Tom's question too, the last facility that, that I had built in the National Park Service was finished about 10 years before I retired, and it was 65,000 square foot. And that times, the reason they get big inside is that you've got storage up above also. You've got your shops down the surround, and then there's storage up above them, so there's a lot of reasons because it doesn't cost you that much more to punch up another 15 foot while they're going this way.
Oh, good.
So, and you know, maintenance complexes are very unique things. They have a lot of ventilation requirements because sometimes they have all the trucks started inside. I mean, there's a lot of things that normally you wouldn't get into, you know, for winter ops and all.
Well, thank you. Because when I saw the height of it, I was like, geez, that seems like an awful lot of height, but thank you.
Yeah, they have balcony storage. If you look, there's stuff stored up on the balcony.
That's where the picture's taken from.
Yeah, up on the balcony.
Yeah.
Because they, maintenance stores a lot of stuff up like that.
Okay.
The mezzanines, and they're built over administrative or other storage spaces down below. So you'll have like offices or, you know, tool storage, and then above you'll have mezzanine storage for like, you know, traffic cones and barrels and less, you know, heavy-duty things.
Okay.
I was going to say, maybe this is a better question for Richard. When you, when Steven said we would just, we could just take this and plop it down, I mean, that's always cheaper rather than design a new facility, if you can do that?
Yeah, if you can do it. I think he physically was saying the facility, not specific, but physically. It's got the big wash racks, it's got the big auto shop. Those are the design elements. Most of that, unfortunately, is already done, but funny thing about A and E's, they just don't really give you a break in services for design work.
Well, they'll, they'll tell you that every project is unique and has unique needs and...
Yeah. It's probably true, and the, and the configuration, land and...
Site drives a lot of it, yeah.
And all that stuff.
Now, if we were building five of them, then you're absolutely right.
Yeah, I think the closer you can get to, like, just, there's a design, I like that.
Absolutely.
Let me illustrate this point specifically here, and I do in this, I do in the paragraph because I think it speaks to your point about why you could, it really is not 100%. I was being somewhat metaphorical when I said you could probably drop it here. A major component of their building is a separate entrance with a check-in room for their contract plowers. We don't contract plowing, so that is an entire design feature. Couple, two or three rooms are involved in that process. So that's, you know, significant square footage and, and, you know, dedicated entryways and security and everything else dedicate to that one part of their operations that we don't even have. They do their own tire work, so they've got tire storage all over the place. We don't do our, we outsource our tire work, so that's something we're not going to have. And that's where the differences between one facility versus the other start to, you know, when you get into the programming. I do an update in here at Stores Library. We did hit some unforeseen conditions in the field, so we are, we did work on some change orders with the contractor. We were able to use some remaining FY16 of the operating budget to fund the change orders, and work is recommenced. It's disappoint, I mean, we didn't, we didn't, we barely had enough funding, funding to award the bid, and so we were really hoping for the best in terms of change orders and field conditions, but we did hit a couple of things that were integral to the project, could, could not be, kind of, couldn't get the work done without doing them, so we had to approve the change orders, and like I said, work is going again.
Any questions?
Yeah, Steven, I just have a few questions about going through the, not necessarily your report, but the reports that are attached. First one was about, I noted that East Long Meadow's building inspectors retired, and we're backfilling for that, and, and I, I understand the concept of mutual aid and filling in for vacations. We've done that for years and years, but, you know, you know, there's, it seems to be no impetus or urgency on their part necessarily to fill this job, and I was wondering if similarly what we did with, I think it was the nurse or the health worker, is there any opportunity to put together just a, an agreement with East Long Meadow on, on that? And that's just my, my concept, if we're going to be, be having Paul, Paul Healy spend any amount of time beyond just the vacation filling, just a, just a thought process that I...
I can update you on that if you want.
Yeah, if there's an update, that'd be great.
So Paul has been serving on the interview panel for the, for the person they're trying to hire to be their building commissioner. We've done that as well, where department heads from East Long Meadow have come over and served on interview panels over here to kind of get a different perspective, a more technical perspective. The Director of Public Works screening process was a good example of that. Their DPW director came over and spent many hours in our interview process and added great insight to our search. I think Paul Healy's doing that for them. He has been filling in, but we do put limitations on it. We, you know, there is a, there is a reasonable amount of time that can be expected to be spent in East Long Meadow. Paul has notified the town of East Long Meadow that, you know, that he's, once the interview process is done, he's going to, you know, knock over there for a little while, and has given them, has referred them to some people who do it on kind of a per DM, like a per-inspection basis. So we do, you're right, I mean, there are times where we try and be as supportive as possible because when we need it, other towns are always generous with us, but we do put limitations on it.
Okay. Thank you. There's a comment again in the DPW report that the Converse and Dickinson Street, as part of the Converse Street upgrade, the traffic light is going to, they called it a decorative arm instead of wiring, and I guess the, again, that falls into, this is the first of my categories of the character of the town and what decorative arms look like versus wires, and, and, I mean, we've had a lot of comments in the past about we ought to keep to the, the old-fashioned posts and that kind of thing. Again, is, is there a review process by which this is looked at and decided, or is this just a state contract? You get any, this, this is what you get? Take it or leave it?
There's cer, there are certain types of equipment that the state will fund, and certain ones that they won't, so it really is narrower to that list. You know, we, the town currently does not have all that consistent of an approach with the street, with the traffic lights, so it's not like every traffic light is the same type and of the same, you know, catalog number and everything else, so it's not, Mass DOT wants to get rid of span wires, they want everything to be a mast arm. In this particular, I mean, the standard in town is black. Our traffic signals are black now because we paint them, but the new ones come out, you know, with powder coating or some kind of covering that's black, and they look great, and I think my view on streetscaping and all the design work I've done is, it doesn't really matter what style you choose as long as you use that style throughout its consistency. And so a black streetlight is con, is considered decorative, but, you know, fluted columns and all these other things aren't necessarily necessary. So in terms of the Dwight Road, the one decorative element is that it'll, that instead of the mast arm coming straight out from the pole, it's going to be lower and kind of goose neck out a little bit, but that's because the foundation was being built under power, under power lines, and so it was either choose that decorative style or get involved with utilities having to move poles at great expense. And so it was a, really a workaround in that case, but no one's, no one's really can hardly notice the difference. And, oh, by the way, you're going to have better views to the traffic signals from all directions. In terms of the other traffic signals, I know the town, since long before my time, has liked their single posts that are close to the curb, but we've also had discussions about how long those are up to service, so you, we really can't have it both ways. You have to either modernize your equipment or accept the fact that they're going to get knocked over three or four times a year and be out of commission for a while.
And I understand. I guess the, the bigger question, and I, I don't know even how this gets answered, but is, you know, is this a decision that's an administrative decision or is it a decision that belongs to some group? And I don't know whether it's a planning board or it's a traffic committee or, or what, because again, it speaks to, and I'll just go right into the next one, which I, I noted is, you know, Long Meadows, we're looking at a potential project to revise Long Meadow Street, it says between Converse Street south to the Enfield line, and it would entail a widening of the streets and, and pavement. And again, you know, I, I sat on this board when the board rejected a couple of projects because there was a desire not to turn the, the roads into four-lane roads and keep them two-lane roads, and yet the state standard is, is four-lane. So the question is, who gets to comment on it? And, and I don't have an answer, and I'm not proposing an answer. I just think it's an important question on, you know, on parts of the character of the town.
I believe that Mass DOT does have a public comment part of the process, or I don't know if that has already happened yet though.
No, I, I don't know. I mean, and, and in fact, in the prior instance, Steven, we actually reject the, we, the board rejected state funding because if you take state funding, the state standard was something that the board didn't want to move to, and it came before the board, and it got turned down. And so that, and I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent, and I understand progress. I just think we need to have a discussion about, about stuff like that as opposed to it just showing up and everybody saying, we're changing the character of the town, and nobody got any input into it. I don't know who gets the input, but, and I don't even know how to go about doing that really, so I'd just throw that back.
Mark, thanks for bringing that up because, you know, when you look at sections of Enfield where Route 5 is four lanes, and you look at sections of West Springfield where Route 5 is four lanes, you know, they're completely different than what we have in Long Meadow. And so, you know, we really need to work as a community and have, have that looked at before any major decisions. I mean, there probably are going to be open meetings about it, but what I liked about the report is just, it reminded me that, you know, Converse Street and Long Meadow Street, which is our two pretty well-trafficked, traveled venues, don't have sidewalks that go from one end to the other through our town. And, and, you know, so that's a good goal, and, you know, I guess after our meeting on Tuesday, hopefully we'll be closer to that with Converse Street, but Long Meadow Street, you know, that's down the road at some point. I, I would think that that should be a goal, you know.
It's your stopgap though, your planning board? I mean...
I would think, but I don't know if this comes before the planning board. I don't, I don't think it does.
No, I don't, I think there's, I think there's public, I don't know if we've hit the design threshold to have the public meetings, but I do believe that public meetings are a part of Mass DOT's process. I, like I said, I don't know that they've, maybe they've, maybe they've already happened, but they do get public input.
Is the planning board excluded from the, from that process?
I believe so. I think that's the case everywhere though. I think the planning board gets involved in roadway reconstruction.
And see, I would assume that they would be involved signing off on everything that has design element changes and impacts the community.
Not within the right of way.
Well, even within the right of way. I mean, if, if, because if there's a deferral mechanism, I, I understand, I don't totally agree with what Mark's saying, that you turn something down, let the funds go. I think you've got to work these things out, but you don't want to totally smash the character of your town by mistake, and nobody knows it's coming. And the only people that I know that are actively involved with the dedicated purpose of that review is planning.
I think on a case-by-case basis, yeah, but not, not, and like I said, I'm not, I'm not aware of that, and I've never really heard of that, but it's possible that I'm mistaken. I, I'll look into it.
Yeah, but if we don't have visual quality guidelines set up, pre-established guidelines, then your staff is incapable of knowing what the desires of the community are then.
I don't know that I agree with that statement.
Well, tell, somehow clarify then, and tell me how they would know what's...
Because we pay attention to what people like and the complaints we get and the feedback we get on the things we do.
But if you don't have the standard, how do you know?
Because we are able to judge the character of the community like anybody else is.
Just like a Johnny Carson moment? What did you bring?
No, we, I mean, we hear, we get, we get tons of feedback from people, so we, you know, you know, when we hear stories like the Select Board said no to money because they, to make improvements because it didn't fit the character of that stuff, we pay attention to that.
I think it'd be worth it to come back and report to us the next time what you think would be a good way to be able to touch base, whether it's public hearings or maybe talk to planning and see how they feel about it, or Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, how other towns handle it, and report at the next meeting.
And the next time I decide to quit talking, I'll tell you I'm going to stop.
Yeah, okay. Well, just this way you will get your answer, and we'll be able to have a full discussion on it.
Yeah, I just have, I have a couple of more things. Steven, the, the report referenced the fiscal year '17 paving plan, and I, maybe, Richard, you would ask this at the last meeting or something, but can, can we just, you know, look at, get with the fiscal year seven, or whatever the paving, resurfacing plan is, just to kind of follow that up?
I thought that...
It wasn't your report, it was in the DPW.
No, but I thought that, I thought that had been transmitted. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't remember seeing. The other thing is, in the DPW report, they were talking about Russell Field. And it said, "The annual town meeting approved the purchase and installation of sixty-five feet length by twenty feet high of safety netting on Russell Field along Bliss Road. The idea is to contain soccer balls from going to the street." I think that's a great idea, but I, I haven't been able to find that approval. And I know that specifically, I kind of fought against high netting at a, on, on swamp fields a few years earlier and probably would have remembered it. So, again, it's, it's, you know, if we're gonna put up a twenty-foot-high, sixty-five-foot-long fencing along Russell Field, I think people ought to see what we're gonna be doing, because it, that definitely will impact the, with the character of the town is looking through it. And I don't...
It was a CPA project that was approved. I, I don't know, I don't remember if it was approved or not. That was all going kind of fast and furious, but all the CPA stuff was approved.
See, but I looked through the CPA money, and I didn't see a thing for Russell Field for fencing, for netting.
So, would you check and get back to us on that?
I mean, I, you know, I'm sure there was CPA money in there. And you're right, it was going fast and furious. The, uh... There, in the, in the finance committee report, there was a, a comment about our general reserves getting to the lower end of our policy range. And I think we should all just make note of that, that, that the general reserves are getting to the lower end of our range. And what that says to me is that perhaps at the special fall town meeting, which we have every year, we ought to see what we can do to make sure some of our free cash gets moved into reserves so that we don't continue to be at the lower end, but we get moved more toward the middle. I understand that the fall, we pay the bills we need to pay and do a lot of things with free cash, but sometimes it's optional. And I think there's, we may want some discipline based on that comment that, that was in the finance report about our, our reserve loan.
Any other questions? The town manager report? I just wanted to say, the chief is here, and I'm glad he is. I was really pleased with the police report, and especially the performance measures at the end. It was fantastic because we got a better feeling of how you've really changed in the actions that are occurring in town, like more tours of the park. And so, we had a better feeling of really what the police are doing in the area. So, thank you very much for that report. It was great. I thought we would move up, since the traffic sergeant is here on the crossing guard program, move it up to be part of your town manager's report. I know you had mentioned that, and that way you won't be waiting as we get through our old business. So, we'll just move you up.
Thank you. I appreciate you seeing us tonight. I brought Sergeant Cut, Mesafaro here tonight to introduce him to the board, and you to him as well, if you have not met him before. It, one thing about promotions in our department, it becomes very, very difficult because historically, we have a tradition of hiring talented employees. And Stephen and I both found it very difficult to choose one candidate, because each, four of the candidates could have easily done this job as well. But what set Sergeant Mesafaro apart from the other candidates was his interest in engaging in the community. He has proven himself over the last nine months by, he had the opioid addiction conference or symposium that he worked with, with firefighters. And he brought in the district attorney as well as a state senator, and we had over two hundred attendees there. So, it was very helpful. He proved himself there. Also, he volunteered at Long Meadow Days and engaged in the community there for two days, as well as he's also built a curriculum. He's gonna start the Citizens Police Academy beginning this fall. So, as you can see, he, he does enjoy engaging in the community, and I think that's what set him apart from the others. He is an eighteen-year, he's been a police officer for eighteen years, eight years here in Long Meadow, and three years as a detective. And since July first, when he took, took his new position, he's hit the ground running. There's a lot, big learning curve for him. But I'm very confident, he's motivated, he wants to succeed. And, but I'm gonna let him tell you a little bit about what his plans are. But I'm very pleased with the addition of Sergeant Mesafaro to the department.
Thank you, chief. Before we begin, I just have a handout from the board.
Well, he's handling, handing that out. I do want to remind the board that the reason why we added a supervisor position and created this position was because traffic complaints are one of the biggest issues we deal with, day in, day out. We spend an exceptional amount of time. And the chief wanted someone in his department that could be the go-to person to handle, to handle and coordinate the multiple departments that have some level of input into traffic issues. And we were just sort of talking about in, you know, the beginning comments of this kind of push-pull between dissatisfaction with traffic conditions and aversion to making the changes you need to make to set, to improve the traffic conditions. So, this is the challenge now that Sergeant Mesafaro is gonna find himself, in addition, and it will, honestly, he obviously goes beyond traffic, and he'll talk about that. It's pedestrians, cyclists, crossing guards, you know, all kinds of stuff, so.
Construction management, construction management, yes.
I'd like to thank the board for letting me come and speak to them tonight. When the chief came out with his requirements for the traffic sergeant position, the responsibilities, I looked it over and I broke it down to what I felt was a manageable four categories for all the requirements. The first category is patrol sergeant. Even though I will be in an administrative position, I will have occasions where I will be the patrol sergeant in addition. So, as you can see, the, what the responsibilities are for the patrol sergeants, the daily operations of answering the patrol officers for calls or, you know, walk-ins with the citizens. The second part of that is the traffic and safety portion of the responsibilities. This is be handling speeding complaints, traffic complaints, putting out the traffic trailer, assigning patrol officers to doing speed checks or designated radar in certain areas of town. The third portion is the administration portion. And again, this portion will be dealing with my relationship with being a liaison, you know, with the mass registry of motor vehicles, the DPW, Mr. Maza, in addition to handling other traffic administration parts of the responsibility, and supervising the crossing guards. And then, the last portion is what I felt was community relations. And this is putting out programs within the community, such as bike rodeos, teaching the kids bike safety. And like I said, it's just getting out there within the community and, I mean, even, even following up with the residents when they do have a traffic complaint as part of the community relations aspect of, of the responsibilities. Do you have any other questions?
Yes, Sergeant, I just have a quick question for you. Not, this isn't great summary, but my question has to do with something that we've been hearing, and I, and I don't really hope that this, I hope that this doesn't really put you on the spot. But the question is about handicap parking on private property. Do you think that's something that we have the capacity, ought to have the capacity, want to get involved with, or not get involved with?
Are you talking about like being at the shops?
Yes, right.
Well, we, we can, we can enforce parking violations with handicap parking. Somebody violates, we have that part of our parking violations in our citation book for that. So...
So, we could do that now if...
Yes, absolutely.
I was, do, is it to assume that we generally do that based on complaints or things as opposed to, no, we'll go looking for it?
That's aggressively enforced. That's one of our, one of our pet peeves. It's like, anybody who is audacious enough to park in a handicap spot when they're not handicapped, they're getting, they're gonna get a ticket for that.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Well, just to build on that, what if a person parks, if they're handicapped and they park, like, in their own property, like on the grass or something? I mean, you know, is that, because that's where you get into this area where you say, a person with a handicap should have the ability to park as close to the door as possible. But yet, maybe they may not have the funds to put in a new driveway. I don't know. I guess we probably haven't thought about that, but...
It's their own private property. So, it, you know, we do have bylaws for, you know, where to, for parking and stuff on the tree belts and stuff like that. But as for parking in their own, you know, up to their front door, there's, there's not much we can enforce with that. So, if it is their private property.
A bylaw was put forward to prohibit people from parking up in front yards, but it didn't get approved at the time. I think it got tabled at the town meeting. It was mostly a victim of circumstance at that particular town meeting, but that is something that is, we get a lot of complaints.
What usually happens is, is the officer on a midnight day shift, we have the bylaw restricting your parking on the street through certain hours. So, officers are actively enforcing that. Well, there's some people who only have a room in their driveway for two vehicles or three vehicles, but yet they're a four-car family. So, now, they have a, they have a decision to make. Do you leave it on the street, take a chance of not getting a ticket, or do you park it on your front lawn? Well, that's what we're starting to see, is people parking them on their front lawn in order to avoid getting the ticket. So, I think that's where that whole article came, one article came forward, was trying to change that, because of those restrictions.
That's a strong. The other thing is, the bike rodeo sounds great. I have seen them, and I've never seen one in town here, though. I don't think we've ever had one, have we?
I think we have.
You think so? Yeah.
I think we have, maybe a bike sale, not a bike rodeo.
We've had bike, I'm going, I'm going back. Officer Kirby was our safety officer years ago, and he did a phenomenal job. And I think that's the void we've been missing ever since his departure. And because of personnel issues, as far as hiring, being able to hire, having a budget to do so, we haven't been able to replicate that position in over nine years. So, this is our opportunity to do that. And I think it's gonna be a benefit to the whole community. So, we will bring back those bike riders, and they are, they are well-attended and they are beneficial to kids, especially since we're getting Converse Street, we're looking at repaving Converse Street, we're having bike paths on Converse Street as well as Laurel Street. So, I think it comes at a perfect time to do this.
Well, I think it's also good for young people in the town to have some interaction with police officers in a positive way, especially with all the stuff they're seeing on the media. You know, it's nice for them to, to see officers, you know, in a bike rodeo and contribute to the community. I know when I was growing up, we actually had a, a police wrestling team that was for teenagers in the community, in the Rochester Police Wrestling Club. And so, some officers would come and, and interact with teenagers who were interested in wrestling. But a bike rodeo is a lot less of a commitment, but...
I'm gonna recommend a dunking booth at Long Meadow Days.
For select board members?
No, chiefs and ops, chiefs and ops. I had, I did have a couple of questions. Under your administrative duties and all, you were talking about informing the DPW and the state DPW of effective deficiencies, like traffic lights. And are you talking about physically you doing the inspections or increasing awareness of it in the department for patrol personnel?
It's when a, when a traffic light is out of service, informing the DPW that it is out of, out of service, and also keeping up to when is that gonna be replaced and fixed. But as for inspections, I would not be responsible for doing inspections. It's, it's just noticing, you know, sidewalks that might be cracked, that might be a hazard to pedestrians, potholes in the roads, and things like that. What I've asked the patrol officers to do is just send me an email if that occurs on their shift and I'm not working. So, I can forward that to the DPW and make sure it was forwarded to the DPW and make sure that it does get rectified.
Yeah, because there's no shortage in line of sight right now with the, you know, in the middle of summer with the limbs and the trees and faded signs and crooked signs.
Yeah, we're having problems with that. One thing Sergeant Mesafaro mentioned to me also is, he was gonna be doing some research on the cost of portable stoplights, traffic lights. We see that other communities utilize those when traffic lights are down for a prolonged period of time. Of course, we've seen Edgewood Avenue, Route 5. And we've had it, this past spring, we had a station officers out there during the morning, during the morning and the afternoon, as kids were coming in and out of school for, to assist the crossing guard, because that is utilized, but it's been down for several months now. So...
Another item of particular interest is, we've had a lot of controversy in the last five years or so on the school, school crossing, or the pedestrian crossing segments. And, you know, it seems like we've got a crossing guard or in, in the operational season on just about every one of these things, and yet we have three or four signals out at one time in town. And it just didn't seem to get the level of attention that was required.
That's what we're hoping to take care of now with this new position, is that there'll be somebody designated to, myself will be, you know, on top of making sure these things are taken care of and get answers for when residents are calling and asking questions.
Okay. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate you stepping up and taking the challenge.
Thank you for your time.
Bill, did you have any questions?
No, I'm...
No? Okay, I did. Are you gonna be on the website where people are going to know if they have an issue that they can, that, who the traffic officer is? And I was also wondering if you could get this to me with your contact information, so I can send this to the school committee and they can know. I also, there was the walking school bus. We, we were trying to get that going. And there is money there in that program that we were told we were available for, if you wanted to follow through on that, because I saw you've already applied for some grants, which is wonderful. And one of the things they had was their apps where you can actually inform parents, you know, if they're on the app, if there's a problem with a crossing guard or crossing, or even if you feel there is a problem in town and kids should not be out on their bikes. And so, the walking school bus, if you go to the national program, they, they have that available. And a lot of that is even free to, to get out to the programs. But I'm very excited you're on board.
Thank you.
And your ideas are great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. So, we're going to go back up to the old business. I'm looking for the approve, a motion to approve the minutes of July fifth, regular meeting.
I'll move we approve the minutes of July fifth, two thousand sixteen, regular select board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I wasn't here.
Okay, so you can abstain. Any other corrections, Mark? We're fine? Okay, all those in paper? And abstentions? All right. The next thing was the liaison reports. I brought that back. Last week, we discussed this as various things that people could sign up in, if they were interested in doing. And I sort of took everyone's name off of it. So, everything is available. I did put Richard back on DPW. I spoke to him. Is there anyone else interested in one of the liaison appointments?
No, I'll stay with the PBTA.
Okay, PBTA. Are you still interested in following up on what the Selectmen's Association's doing?
Yeah, yeah, I'd be glad to. Yeah, there is a couple of meetings set up in September and in October.
Yeah, and I know they're far away, even if you just follow their minutes and can report back to us on what's going on. Anyone interested in anything else?
Is it conservation?
Well, the other thing I brought down there is, I'm going to try to have closer communication with all of the committees.
Because that's, that's a lot. I mean, you got Conservation Parks and Tree Committee.
So, it'd be basically following up on their minutes, see what's calling the chairs, see what's happening, if there's anything to report back to us. And so, that's why I combine some of the various committees and boards. And of course, if anyone's interested in the Energy, COA, Scantic Valley.
Well, I'm interested in the Hampton County Retirement Board, but I'm sure they're not interested in us. But, I'm not sure, but I suspect they're not interested.
But what I would be looking for is for you maybe to sit with Paul and give us a report on what they're doing, where we stand. In fact, I was going to put, I think it's, I've started to put on the agenda, Scantic Valley Health Trust. I was gonna put the Hampton County Pension Board on that same meeting, and anything you can report on where we are, you know, percentage funding, where we're expected to get funded to. And there's a lot of options that I'm not sure if they voted into the, accepting the options or not. And so, I'll, I'll talk to you offline.
Okay.
And Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, I spoke to Walter. He said that he was just appointed. He's appointed, someone's appointed yearly by the planning board, and the alternate is the town manager. And he checked and said that is traditional for the town manager, if there is one to be the alternate. And you don't have to answer today, just think about who else, what else you might be interested in. And again, it doesn't mean you need to attend the meetings. It might mean you just sort of follow up with the chairs and see what's happening in that area.
Marie, there is a, a proposal, I saw it a couple of years ago, that we remind all the boards to copy in the select board on their minutes when they go to the town, town office. I don't know if they go to the clerk or to Debbie's office for the, but that would really be helpful to all of us to follow what these boards and committees are doing. If we just got the minutes we want to re-infind. If we don't, that's okay too.
Okay, I will follow up with the committees on that.
Are we, you gonna try to lock people in tonight?
Yeah, if anyone's interested, I'll lock, we, too, we could...
Well, Tom said he would take everything that no one else took.
Which Tom is that you're referring to?
The Tom is not the room.
Yeah. I'll, I'll go ahead if, if you want me. I'll go ahead on the planning board.
Okay.
And then I'll take DPW.
All right, planning, all right. And again, anyone else tell me what they're interested in, can be offline, and then we can settle it next week.
Marie, I said, you know, I'm doing the PBTA, so I'll do that. That's very...
Yeah, I have you down for PBTA, retirement.
Retirement Board, I do finance and audit if nobody else wants to either.
Okay. And I'll stay on Adult Building Committee if no one's interested, and the energy.
And you're also in Scantic Valley, aren't you?
Yeah, if no one else wants it, I'll stay on it, but.
Well, you understand it.
Yeah.
You've been at a lot of their meetings.
That's true.
So I don't think anyone else has participated as much as you have in Scantic Valley.
They haven't even seen that.
Oh, you haven't seen the list. Okay, so we'll finish it up next week and that gives Bill time to really look at it. And we'll, we'll vote on it next time because there's not a lot of meetings happening for the next few weeks.
I'm sure I'm busy.
Slip them, slip them in and all leave them. Okay.
Exactly. All right, and then we'll move on to council appointments. Did you want to talk about that, Stephen?
The information you've asked for is in the packet, right in the retainers.
So it's coming down to, do we want to just re-sign with our current or did we want to put this out to bid? Did we want to re-sign for a year and then consider putting it out to bid? I don't know how the board felt about it.
I mean, I, I think there's a lot of value, as Stephen you'd said, in institutional memories, particularly with Labor Council and, you know, Town Council. I know that it's a new approach. It's a little different. I mean, I'm fine with doing that. The one thing, concern I have is that, that we have a, you know, we, I don't know that we negotiate the hours that are included in our, either it's a retainer or our base fee or whatever it is, when we have years that we know are going to be particularly busy in labor areas. And I think that's the only concern I have. And it doesn't seem, I mean, I wasn't able to tell that based on what we had here that we actually get a, if you will, a break based on, you know, the first X number of hours at a reduced rate from, from our labor lawyer. And I'd be interested in, but that's not, I mean, it's tough to say, you know, we'll accept them as our council and then negotiate the cost later, but at some point I think we need to.
For example, you talked about the risk corridor, which is that kind of flex number of hours that go into the retainer.
Right.
You know, I could certainly say, listen, how about the 25% flex hours, you know, bump that up a little bit because we had such a tough year and then hope, and then just hope we don't ever hit that. In terms of that we, the, it's a flat annual fee that is for Town Council, Doherty Wallace. And I cut back Mike's email. I was more concerned about them dropping us than us renewing with them because that's, it's not like, as I mentioned before, it's not a bid. You, you go out for qualifications and then you negotiate a price. I am highly skeptical. We'll get as good a service at 96 bucks an hour from another firm. The labor is structural differently. I can look at that and discuss that with Sullivan Hayes and Quinn about potentially reviewing our experience this past year and the reasons why it went, I mean, I know the reasons why it went over, but ways to maybe handle that a little better so that we don't have the significant impact that we did.
So is there a motion to direct Stephen to?
I, I don't know if it's to direct Stephen, but I'd make a motion that we appoint Sullivan Hayes and Quinn as our, as our Labor Council for the fiscal year 2017 based on the contract we have with a request from Stephen that we look at expanding the base hours if possible.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor? And then?
Yeah, I move we approve, we appoint Doherty Wallace, Pillsbury and Murphy as our, as our general town council for the fiscal year 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
And was there anything you wanted Stephen to?
No, that one.
Work on that one?
We just decreased that last year.
No, that one's.
We did, okay.
We did, yeah.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? And that's it? There's just the two?
Yeah, the Land Use Council, we don't use all that often and quite honestly, we've been going more toward going, because we have this team approach with Doherty Wallace we didn't have before, we do use them for a lot more land use issues as well.
But they're not appointed Town Council. They're an ad hoc.
They're an ad hoc. The planning board uses them, but they're just kind of an ad hoc thing. They're more like, look at them more as a consultant than council.
And the fees on them, are we satisfied with those?
Good luck.
Yeah.
Well, that's why there might be a local land use.
Well, KP, they're now called KP Law. Call my page, it's called KP Law now. And they, they represent communities all over the Commonwealth.
So I know.
No, I, we haven't used them in a while, to be honest with you.
Okay. All right, so moving on to bylaw and charter changes. I was going to have this on every single week to see if we could just sort of move things through. And so we could discuss the ones that have been brought up. And the first one was the clean and lean that the town manager was recommending we put forward. And we put a sample in there. That wasn't the one. But before he goes to all the work of creating a warrant article, I wanted to make sure that the select board was comfortable with a clean and lean bylaw.
Can you refresh me, Stephen or Marie, on?
Steve, do you want to go into it because it was, it relates to what you were talking about, about relating properties.
Well, I, clean and lean, I can be easily explained. I think one of the things, can I set that aside for a moment? Because I think one of the things, the reason why this agenda keeps reappearing is that the board has never really consensed around a charter review committee or establishing a charter commission.
I don't think that's what I'm talking about here. That's why I was, wanted to go into first thing.
Oh, okay, so you're just regular, setting aside the charter.
Exactly. Just right now, we're talking about the bylaw. If there is a will on the board to really want to see that as a warrant article.
Sorry, I misunderstood. So clean and lean is basically, you know, one of the, second perhaps to traffic, people complaining about their next door neighbor's property. And we do have some lighting properties. You heard my presentation about the receivership issue. There's a, and then there's a parcel of land that is owned by someone who lives out of state and is not buildable. And anecdotally, or apocryphally, I heard that he was denied permission to build and that's why he lets the grass get to be three feet tall before he cuts it, only under the threat of fines that, you know, we do attach to the property, but you don't get, you don't get that paid back until there's a transfer of the property. We don't get to attach it directly to the next utility bill or the next, you know, quarterly real estate tax bill. You attach to the property and when it transfers, you get paid off at closing. That could be years. So we can't afford, town operations cannot afford to either send our own guys out there to attack these things or contract every time this comes up. We have done it in rare circumstances when we have, when we are interacting with someone who owns the property and we can, you know, go forth for the, you know, in lieu of the fines, they pay off the work or whatever. But this clean and lean would allow us to attach it directly, I believe, either to a utility bill or a real estate tax bill. And we can get that money collected sooner and then not have it create a revenue or expenditure problem for us during the year. The one you have is from, Paul got the Smithsonian Holyoke, some of his contacts. There are some, there are some methods that you can do this right now and under Mass General law, but as we discovered, it's a slow process. I believe the clean and lean is a little more efficient. And that's something that, again, I think it's, you know, something that could be a useful tool to managing the, you know, the condition of properties and the visual standards of the community.
And Stephen, who would determine, you know, if the property was sort of behind, you know, in terms of being maintained? Because, you know, when, a person's complaint may not be as accurate as like what someone from DPW might think. So I guess, you know, because, you know, the neighbor might say, well, you know, this is unbearable, you know, I can't, they don't trim around their trees, you know, and, you know, they cut all the rest of the lawn, but not that. You know, so how would we, would there be someone who'd make that assessment?
We have bylaws that already talk about it. It's, you know, six, grass can't be higher than six, excuse me.
Four inches. Six inches?
Yes, excuse me, wow. Six inches. So you can't, and then there's, you know, noxious weeds and, you know, what happens if something gets overgrown and the bushes need to be trimmed, you know, they can't be overgrown sidewalks. So we do have that language in our bylaws.
Okay.
This is more of a funding mechanism. There is some subjectivity to it, to be sure, but I think, and I'm, I'm probably talking out of turn here a little bit, but to my recollection, the complaints come when it's mostly when it's for real, when it's really is, when it really is blighting. I mean, occasionally we'll get somebody who's just angry at neighbor and as soon as it's six and one eighth inches, they'll, you know, call Paul Haley and file a complaint or one branch is hanging over the side. I mean, we do get some of that.
Okay, yeah.
Even though, even though this is the happiest place in Massachusetts, we do occasionally get complaints like that. But this is more, it gives us something to go on the property, address it and not have to go through court.
Words, words sounds good to me.
Well, then I'm looking for a motion to, you know, direct the town manager to prepare a warrant article. If once the warrant article comes up in the fall, we decide it's not ready or we're not happy with it, it doesn't mean it's going to go on the warrant. It just means we don't want him to start working on something unless it's the will of the board. So is there a motion for?
Sure, I'll prepare, I'll make a motion to, that we direct the town manager to develop a bylaw related to, I hate, I'm not, don't want to use clean and lean, but related to improved means of recovering the cost of cleaning lighted properties.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And then the charter changes, the, I had them put into the packet, the legal opinion that we had before that basically says that we can, as a board, their way we could do charter changes is there could be citizens petitions that can come out of a committee or this board can decide that they want to put a warrant article on, whether it's we want to increase the number of signatures for a citizen's petition or if we want to change the voting mechanism of committees. Or I know there's been some concerns about how often we need, there's that 30 day rule, Richard, that kept bothering you, that you had to interview and then vote within 30 days and we ran into that problem. So I'm going to just leave this here and if someone comes up with a charter change, the next meeting or the meeting after that and they want it to, just bring it in front of the board and then the board can discuss it and again, do the same thing of saying, let's move forward on a charter change. It could not be a large charter change such as changing our terms of the select board or any other elected officials, but it can be tweaking it here and there.
You're not changing the charter, you're changing just the bylaws, aren't you?
No, that would be actual charter change.
Yeah. Then I'll give you an example.
We've amended the charter.
Right.
One of the things we discovered is that the town manager can appoint an acting town manager who functions like the town manager in the town manager's absence. But then it says later that in the absence of the town manager, the select board has to sign warrants and not town meeting warrants. Warrants are like bill drafts that we do periodically, you know, payroll warrants and things like that. And they're really just, you know, signature pages with big thick bills to be paid. They're a routine matter. But we went to town council because the auditors raised it and that is the one duty that, that the acting town manager, according to, I mean, we got, cannot do. And it's, that's been the practice for years. We just always assumed. And the auditors were the ones that pointed, our new auditing firm pointed it out. That would be something that we'd want to consider changing because, you know, the bills have to be paid on, you know, in time. And it may be, maybe the select board designates the acting town manager or the finance director, somebody else to have that signatory authority. So we don't run into a problem where we can't pay our bills without calling a special meeting on the select board. So that's just one, like, that's like a specific tweaking. That's not a bylaw, but it is a charter thing.
Wasn't it my recollection though, that you and Mark were putting together a study committee or something to look at all the bylaws and the charter?
Right. We, we do have that together and we're talking about maybe building a committee or a commission. But what I'm putting down here is when, I'm hoping that every meeting, something small comes up, you can bring up as a possible bylaw change or amendment to the charter. So there's, there's a mechanism involved with every time we have a select board meeting. So if, we've already listed three or four that's come out of the various committees. So the next meeting, maybe I'll put in a recommended charter change regarding associate committee members being allowed to vote if there's not a quorum of committee members.
Right.
You might want to bring forward, warrant articles can be taken care of by an acting town manager. So we don't need to wait for the whole committee to make major changes. This is something we could just do on a regular basis.
So maybe I missed it, but what is the, what are you doing about the actual committee though?
We're going to, I gotta sit down and we'll, we need to make recommendations. We haven't done that yet.
We're going to try to sort through what, we haven't gotten all the feedback yet from the committees either, Richard.
So there's, there's still forthcoming now?
Yes. But I didn't have anything in the way of charter amendments today. I just wanted to bring that up and show, say it's going to be on every agenda. And if something comes up and you want to bring that forward, you definitely can mention it to go in the packet so we can discuss it. All right, the next is election worker appointments. Did you want to say something else?
Yeah, I wanted, if I can back up just on one item, I understand the clean and lean, I support that a thousand percent. I worked with a clean and lean program on my last actual job. It worked very well, at least for cleaning up the properties. It worked very well. Sometimes getting the money back didn't work so well, but the first part worked very well. I think the part bothers me more is that, and you've heard me say it before, is we have a bylaw or whatever policy that's six and a half inches of grass and we're going to force you to mow your grass, but we can have a seven inch plaster, a seven inch blister of paint coming off the side of your house and we say, hey, okay with me. I don't quite understand that, that, that's, you know, grass, grass is something that comes and goes, but blisters stay forever. You know, it's a visual quality degradation of the community when, and I don't know why we can't move in that direction to start to something about visual quality standards in our community.
I think that'd be a great bylaw. I know you've mentioned in the past, I, if you have a sample you could bring to the next meeting.
Well, common sense sample, I mean, you just, you know, if you go by and you got this chunks of paint coming off the outside of a structure, you say that visually does not fit long metal.
Foster proposes homeowners association for town.
Could be. Well, you have, you have brought a homeowner association when you say your grass gets six and a half inches, you want to mow it or we're going to come in and mow it for you?
It is a little.
It's the same thing.
It is a little subjective. I, I grant you that.
Yeah, trash cans at the road, no, no center and 530, that's an HOA type thing. So we're just saying, why don't we carry it to the point where it really does everything we needed to do?
If we had an HOA, you sure as hell couldn't park your cars in the grass.
You sure couldn't.
But I think the visual standards, you're saying specifically we should do something about the paint.
Well, I'm saying everything, I'm saying everything, Marie. You know, I don't know where, where your limits are. I know there's going to be a lot of opposition because you get a lot of people say, this is my property, I'll treat it as I want. But yet, when your property starts to influence my property, I have equal complaint. And real estate values, we got a real estate person right here, right now, okay? How many people you're going to get that want to buy a home next to one that's falling apart?
No, it's a, it's a problem.
Yeah, they're not going to do it. And the whole street property values can go down. And further we allow it to go, the more we hurt our town. So sooner or later, we're going to have to have enough nerve and to stand up and take a stand.
I think it's a great idea because we're worried about losing the tax rate.
Right.
It's property values. It's going to, if they keep laying flat or going down, that's where we're going to have our troubles. So I'll be interested, I'll put it on the agenda.
Well, we got Bill on to bring some of this input from his side of the profession where he's seeing. I mean, he can actually tell us some statistics.
Okay, so we'll put that on as the next bylaw we're going to consider, August 1st. All right, election worker appointments. The Republican Town Committee and the Democratic Town Committee presented their list. And I think we need to have two different motions.
Yeah, I move we approve the election worker nominated based on the letter, May 24th, 2016 from the Chair of the Long Meadow Democratic Town Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and I'm looking for a motion for the Republican Town Committee.
Yeah, I move we approve the election worker appointments as outlined in the July 10th, 2016 letter from the Republican Town Committee Chair of Long Meadow.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, and moving on to the Board of Health appointments.
And thank everybody that's willing to serve in those positions.
Board of Health, we have two, the two doctors who interviewed the last meeting are looking for, each of them a three-year term expiring 6/19. I'm looking for a motion to appoint them.
Sure, I guess it's up to me, huh?
Yeah.
I, I move that we appoint Dr. Richard Steingard and Dr. Barry Eisenstein to three-year terms on the Board of Health, expiring, terms expiring June 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
And thank those, thank those who're willing to come serve.
And now the application for the block party, there was a date and time change.
Yeah, I move we approve the block party for, I guess, Norton, uh, Brittany Road, uh, for October first with a rain date of October third.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, and now we need to sign the state primary warrant.
There is a, just a little brief thing on that, I noticed, the signer, the applicant never signed the form.
For the block party?
Yeah, it's just a little administrative thing.
Oh, you're right.
More than a little administrative.
It's 'cause I wrote it.
Oh, okay.
This is her original, here's her original.
Okay, the original was signed.
It was a Jewish holiday, so she wanted to change the date.
Okay.
So we need to sign the state primary, do we need to vote to approve the primary warrant, or just sign it?
No, it's a warrant, I, we have to approve it. I don't know what, I don't know what happens if we don't approve it, but I guess Long Meadow doesn't vote. I, I move we approve the warrant for the state, state primary election to be held, uh, what is it, September eighth, two thousand sixteen, from seven AM to eight PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Can I, can I just ask a question, Stephen, maybe you can go back to Kathy? That, you know, all, all the state elections and all the national elections are all different hours than our town election. Is there a reason, I, I mean, I think we have to abide by the state hours, is there a reason that we restrict the town hours? And, and is that, it's mostly in the morning, town elections are eight AM to eight PM instead of seven AM, and there's a lot of people, I think, who try to vote in that seven to eight AM timeframe.
Ours are eight to eight.
Right, that's what I, that's what I meant to say, if I didn't say that. And the state and everybody else is seven to eight, you know, what would it cost us to run ours from?
What state, I mean, what state ballot, like, uh?
Well, this, this state primary's seven to eight.
Oh, our local elections are all different times?
The June ones are eight to eight, but this one is seven to eight, 'cause it's by state law, I, I assume the national elections.
I can only imagine, it's just a cost thing.
Does this need to be signed?
And the Board of, the Board of Elections and Register is made.
There's fine.
Okay, I can, I can look into it.
All right.
All right, so he's, what's he supposed to get? You're supposed to get back to Mark on times of the voting?
Yes.
Okay.
Just what, you know, is, is it, is it a big cost, and if so, you know, that's all.
Thank you. All right, the next is the town manager evaluation.
Boo.
No?
I said boo.
Oh, oh, I did miss it. The, um, I put in here a timeline, and I wanted to make sure that was correct with where everyone thought we had all agreed on, that they should have gotten the three sixty evaluations. I put in the, uh, actual form that we're supposed to be using, which is the original form for last year, and then I also put in the goal set that we had voted on, but remember, this was the goal set we didn't vote on until, when was that? Was that January or February?
I don't remember.
Yeah, it was a while, it, it was like well into the year. And we're expecting a, um, Stephen, you're going to be doing, sending us something about what's occurred in the past year? And around August first, is that when we were looking at it? Is there anything else I'm missing in the evaluation? Uh, when do you think we should have it due?
It says August tenth, right here.
August tenth, you're satisfied with that? Okay. Um, so, no questions about how we're going forward on it?
I, the, the only question I have, Maria, is how are you gonna, what are you gonna do with them when you get them? You know, and I, and I say that only because, you know, I, you've heard me, well, you've heard me say this before, but I'm a, a, a strong proponent or o- o- opponent of, of averaging. You know, I, I think that averages don't tell you a whole lot, and, and, you know, if you get a one, 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 five, that's very different from, you know, a, a whole bunch of two and halves, which is the same average, and so my, my suggestion or my request is, can you just consolidate rather than average? In other words, you can put them all on one piece of paper or something like that, and put the comments together, but.
Well, this goes back to last year, or the year before, might have been two years ago, or three years ago even. Once it comes to me, it becomes a public document, doesn't it? So I just.
Not until you put it together.
No, just the fact that it's come to me, it becomes a public document, and I shouldn't be deciding what goes into the joint document. I'm just going to put all five into a packet to be delivered to everyone, I could put a list where it shows, but, I mean, it's only five.
What I meant by consolidate, for example, is instead of having Richards and then Toms and yours and, you know, Bills and mine, it is, you know, take all the number ones and put them all together, all the number twos and put it, you know, so I can see, you know, how everybody evaluated on number one, and however, that's what I meant by consolidating.
We, we did a matrix like that last year, I think.
Right.
Yeah, so I'll create a matrix, but I'm still gonna hand out everyone's eval.
The form is, is, uh, item one, service to select board, and then it's Richard's comments, Marie's comments, Tom's, you know, all in that same section, the right, the rating, and then the comments, and then item two.
Right, that was my request.
Budget preparation, that, that's what we already have, that's that's what, that's the way it's been running for two years.
Okay, so, uh, but I just, I'm not going to be, um, creating a whole new document, because I feel everyone.
It's the way we've been doing it, is what you're saying.
Okay.
Do you have, do you have the matrix from last year? I'll check, I'll check and see if I've got the copy of it.
If you could send that to me.
I think it was an Excel matrix, so, I'll, I'll, I'll check.
Okay.
It was a Word doc.
Was it a Word doc?
It was a Word doc, I, I have it, I, I can send it to you.
And then I have it for the agenda for, I believe, is it the fifteenth, is our second meeting in August.
So, so here's the question, if our meeting's the, the fifteenth, it has to go out in the packet on the twelfth? So if we send them in the tenth, you, you're gonna be okay?
Uh, yeah, I'll be fine with that, yeah, 'cause I probably won't get around to it till just before the packets do, anyway.
No, no, I just wanna know, because that's, that's like a one-day turnaround, essentially.
If, if anyone gets it to me earlier, that's fine, if you're, you know, if you finish it tomorrow and you wanna send it to me, I won't mind.
Okay.
But, um, tenth is for people who wanna.
I was planning on going home tonight and getting right on it.
But we're also hoping.
Never should send that HOA thing.
It's bracing my mind, that's the reason I write it up.
So, Stephen, you wanna get that thing to us about how fabulous you are, yeah, so be sure to.
Yes, I'm, I'm working on it.
Okay.
Um, and, and when I say I'm working on it, what everyone means Debbie's working on it. Um, I, I'm not gonna be here, obviously, in the first meeting in August, I think I announced that previously, so, um.
This is the second meeting.
This is the second meeting, no, but I, I will have that, um, to you, hopefully, shortly, we've been, I don't know how to say this, it's sounding like I'm bragging, but there was a lot of information that was submitted by the departments in terms of things that were accomplished during the year, so I'm trying to sift through all of it.
And then after we do the evaluation, I'll get the subcommittee to, um, give us a report on recommendations on the contract, but that's the end of August sometime, after we've done the evaluation.
Can I ask that the subcommittee meet with this board in, since its negotiations in an executive session at some point?
Uh, I'll see when they're ready to report, and then I'll make an executive session, it might not be the fifteenth, I'm not sure.
Okay, that's fine.
You can let me know when you're ready, it could be, yeah, the meeting after the fifteenth, so whenever you're ready, and then.
Is this something that maybe I should meet with the subcommittee as well?
Oh, I recommended that you get your opinion to them.
Who's, who's the subcommittee?
Um, Tom and Bill, uh, we did that, I think you were there.
You, you were.
Oh, no, we were on vacation.
No, I was on vacation.
Um, and so anyone else who has any opinions on changes in the contract for them to look at, they're talking and looking at other contracts, and they're gonna come back with some recommendations, but of course, anyone can make input, including, we'd be interested.
We need to get together.
Yeah, we should probably talk after this meeting, just briefly, 'cause I did get, um, some response from one town, you, you got that?
Right, and next time, don't send it to me, because then, so I didn't respond to it, because I don't want it to be three people discussing it, so it should just be you two guys.
Oh, okay, that's what I said, was you directly, 'cause I figured it wouldn't be a conflict?
Yeah, no, go to him directly.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It's a Tom and Bill, I, I mean, I can say, I, I guess I, I'm not really visualizing a red line version of my contract that I prepare, I don't know if we wanted to meet and discuss it, and then I can give you a written recommendation, or just submit something in writing.
Um, I guess you should submit someone writing.
Yeah, I haven't had time to do much, 'cause I took off, by the way, after our last meeting.
And he's probably gonna figure it during.
He's probably been thinking a lot about it.
Vacation was when you'll come up with all sorts of ideas, I'm sure.
Yes.
Too late on it.
Yeah. Okay.
And then the last item, um, any policy recommendations or changes, I'm gonna try to do this every, uh, meeting also, so this will be just sort of like a placeholder, and, um, in here, it, I'm not saying everyone has to, we have to vote on this tonight, but it's sort of like your first presentation on it, I gave you what we do have currently for our fuel vehicle, fuel efficient vehicle policy, that we voted in, in two thousand thirteen with the green communities. We had a whole series of policies we had to vote in to become a green community. The Energy Task Force is recommending an expansion on that, which goes into more detail about the encouragement of use of hybrid and electric vehicles in the purchase. Now, one of the things the Energy Task Force discovered in their investigation is that if you have so many electric cars in a group, they will, you can get actual funding to get a, um.
Charging station.
Charging station, exactly. And in fact, if they discover that you, there are only so many charging stations on ninety-one, we can also get money for a charging station here in town, and then there's other grants that can flow this way. And, um, they, we have exemptions for a lot of the cars, but yet, um, other police departments are now looking at hybrids for some of their police cars, and those aren't just the traffic ones. So, um, we tried to be careful that we didn't get too heavy-handed on this. Uh, so look through it, uh, tell us what you think, if you think this is necessary, or do you feel it's really covered, um, on the original policy? And again, one of the things as a board we're supposed to be doing is reviewing our policies, so if you come up with a policy that you feel really needs to be reviewed in town or looked at, bring it up and we'll have it on the policy review section of new business.
I seem to recall that, um, one of the things that came up first time around was our ability to service vehicles. Um, and with our current facility and equipment, we obviously could not really service meaningfully a hybrid, but we could fix, you know, and there are certain things we send out, I mean, vehicles are complicated now, too, we send out a lot of things to, to dealerships and things like that, but we are able to do a fair amount with our mechanics, uh, and I think that was one thing to discuss, so just ask folks to bear that in mind. Um, I would think that perhaps as, as we get, once, you know, God willing, we have a site for our DPW, and we start working on design, perhaps the design discussion is, I mean, building charging stations in the facility, um, what do we need to do to our maintenance areas and training to be able to service hybrid vehicles in-house? I think that's a good discussion to have during, uh, Facebook, right now, it's, we don't wanna have, we don't wanna have a, uh, maintenance obligation we can't adequately meet.
Well, the other thing is the charging station probably could be even put near town hall, because it would be something that, um, the residents can actually use, they bring in their charge cards and they charge their vehicles. So it's something that's.
Right next to my parking reserve.
Right, for you lose your parking space.
Now, they're BMW makes a plug-in vehicle.
There you go.
Contract subcommittee, spoiler alert.
Well, there was grants on those too, wasn't there, Stephen?
There were grants, yeah.
Yeah, they, didn't they give two or three of them away to towns?
No, they don't give them away, the, you have to buy the vehicles, and then you write it down over time with annual grants. Uh, but I, I don't know if you have to buy a certain number. Um, and it's, you know, e- each, each vehicle serves a specific purpose and not, there are places that hybrids could be used. But, you know, the people that are in those positions usually get hammy down vehicles anyway.
I would, I would anticipate an operational note, though, with the speed of that industry, the way it's moving forward, that you would likely stay with contractual services for repairs. That's, that's a pretty demanding technological field when you get into hybrids.
I mean, I would say in ten years, all but the heaviest vehicles.
Yeah.
Will be hybrids, I mean, I know it's, police vehicles are now moving towards that, even three or, even three years ago, four years ago, before I came here, we were, we learned that you could not do a hybrid police interceptor vehicle, because the electrical system's closed, you couldn't add your lights and your radio and your laptop and everything else. Now, I think they've changed the electrical systems where you can do that, so it's, it is moving pretty fast.
Yeah.
Moving to electric rather than hybrids, too.
Yeah.
They have SUV hybrids and all that stuff now. Now, my, I have a hybrid, um, almost a hundred seventy thousand miles, and it's had no issues at all. I mean, I haven't had it get much in the way of service, it's unbelievable, and the.
Just jinxed yourself.
It just takes care, I, I just put my first brakes in it, a hundred seventy thousand miles.
I'll, I'll follow you home, Tom, just in case I have to push you the rest of the day, soon as you say that stuff out loud.
Yeah.
So I'll put this on for the next meeting, for us to actually, whether we're gonna vote on it or not, any changes you feel that should be done on it, and so we'll start ripping it apart the next meeting.
Can I, you have a chance to look at for operational considerations?
Oh, yeah, everybody can rip, rip it apart and move it around, you definitely can.
Marie?
Mark?
Yeah, just, you know, when, when I was looking through the packet this weekend, and, and I saw this policy, I went back to, 'cause I didn't remember approving this per se, and, and, and what threw me is that the date on it, there was no meet, you know, the date it was adopted, there was no meeting that date, and so I was never able to find the date we actually adopted that. Now, I understand, you said we adopted it as part of a packet with the green communities, but, I mean, if, if we got dates on these things, we need to make sure that they're.
That they match.
That, that they match when we actually adopted them, so that there's a, you know, there's a record of that kind?
I think, well, it had to be September, though we signed in October, 'cause we had to get the package in, but if I remember correctly, it was September that we, so if you could check that and see when we adopted all the policies for green. There's a whole series of them, and maybe Mark would like to see what it is that we accepted at that point in time. And again, I think the policy we refers to the green communities, this policy that was pulled out was basically, uh, they contacted the green communities, and they said, this is what is recommended, and we just had a, um, simplified version back in two thousand thirteen. But, uh, if there's another policy you want us to review, again, just send that to me, and I'll put it in the packet, and we'll present it one meeting, and then we'll start, uh, looking towards voting or, or pulling it apart, or not adopting it, uh, the next time around, 'cause we have done a lot of our policies, when we tried to do policy reviews, when we did the GFOA, but there's a lot of old policies that are sitting out there that really need to be brushed up, and that's really the job of this board, is to sit there and get the correct, uh, policies together. You'll find through the MMA, they have best practices, policies, any of those that you see, bring those forward, so we can take a look at.
Yeah, well, I'd just like to comment that, you know, your, the changes you're making to our regular meetings are, are really positive. I think it's, it builds on the work that, uh, Richard had been doing to bring up things and make sure we keep moving forward, and, and, you know, just thank you for cheering, and you're doing a great job, so.
Yeah, thank you.
What was that all about?
This is great stuff, she's really, she's, she's, she's setting up a new structure.
I didn't even see that on the agenda.
It's not even eight thirty yet, that's the best part.
I expect from kind of Kumbaya.
Anyone who's gonna get us through all this material is not eight thirty, is my new best friend, okay? We should be bringing, you know, champagne for her.
There we go.
This is all consent agenda stuff.
Exactly, we won't ever see anything else. Uh, subcommittee reports, nothing coming up, no. The closest I have is the Energy Task Force is meeting tomorrow afternoon, and we have a special guest, uh, Mark Gold, and we're going over, we are doing the audit of the survey of the lights, and, um, we have some pictures, but we need a expert, and Mark's gonna try to give us.
And he wasn't available, so I'm gonna go instead.
Try to give us advice that we're doing the right thing.
There's the stickers on the heads, right?
They don't match the list, and so we're gonna go over the list.
That, that's the point, but the stickers on, on the heads me, all mean something. So they're tagged, but it probably doesn't match our inventory list, which is why this thing is a great project.
Yeah, and some of them are out, yay, and some of the light bulbs are the wrong color. I mean, they're all yellow, and they're not supposed to be all yellow, so we're, we're trying to figure out the best way of doing the survey before we start reaching out and asking for help.
I mean, I would do a beta test, I'd have the group kind of do like a couple of hours' worth. Um, like I said, we have GPS handheld devices, but they're very expensive, we only have like one or two of them, and so I don't wanna just like, so here you go, bring these back in a month.
Oh, no, we're doing streets, so we're doing one street at a time.
No, I'm saying, but we want you to stand under the light, shoot the lights, so we know the exact location as you're inspecting it, that's.
Oh, that'd be great, if we could have us.
Right, but that's, it, we're, we're not just gonna turn that equipment over to volunteers. Right, but that's, it, we're not just gonna turn that equipment over to volunteers. So it's gonna take some staff level coordination.
Why are we gonna do that, Stephen? I, because I thought the approach was, I'm at eighty-two such and such a street, and that's the, the poll and the poll number is such and such, and here's what's on it. Now I go to eighty-six.
We do not have a reliable, a reliably accurate GIS layer, um, for streetlights.
But, but the inventory is based on poll numbers.
But if you're gonna go out and look at them while you might as well shoot them so we have a good reliable GIS layer.
Uh, right now, we're looking for, right now, they're charging us for nineteen hundred poles. Do we have nineteen hundred poles that are working? And they're charging us for a certain type of head. I'm hoping that we can show that they're overcharging us.
Yeah, I, like I said, I think that the, the handheld equipment can get a lot of this stuff automated, so we're not tracking down pieces of paper, handkeying the data after. That, that's the big thing. So, but like I said, we don't have, we only have maybe one or two sets, and only one person really knows how to use them. And so I want to have some coordination so we can kind of try and accomplish both those goals.
All right. I will talk to you offline about that, see what we can do. Anything else anyone would like to see on a future agenda or concerns? No? A motion to adjourn?
I think a motion to adjourn.